I just want to begin by saying this is what democracy looks like.[5.35][5.35][applause] A bunch, here we have a group of engaged citizens who want to learn more about candidates. My name is Wendy McNeil and I'm on the board of the League of Women Voters of the Montclair Area. And my role on that board is to serve as a director of Voter Services, which means that I am the person who helps to set these events up. So with that, I would like to thank, first of all, the president of the League of Women Voters, Donna Ward,[50.12][50.12][applause] and Liz George. Could you please stand up? Who is our key collaborator. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. And what our main role is to encourage people to learn about candidates and to vote. So I'm going to urge you to please vote come November. And if the mail-in ballots are in process, please start doing that. But make sure you vote because that's your biggest way of being involved in our democracy. I would like to introduce to you now Arun Er Yagari, who is from the League of Women Voters of New Brunswick, but he's also on the board of the statewide League of Women Voters. And he is going to serve as our moderator. So please realize that whenever we do these forums, the sponsoring league cannot present a moderator. So we always have to get someone from outside of our league. And so I would like to introduce to you Arun, who came all the way up here from North Brunswick.[146.12][146.12][applause]
Thank you very much. I was joking with the guys before, I'll be the guy whom you'll hate me for the next two and a half hours, maybe. But I promise I'll be the nicest guy after that. Okay. All right. Good evening, everybody. Just like everything else in life, there are rules when it comes to this forum as well. Some of these might be very familiar to you, but I still have to read the rules, which I will. The moderator's decisions on matters that arise during the forum are final. Observe time limits, please. As we discussed, the opening statement is two minutes. Any answers would be a minute and a half. The closing statements would be a minute long. Order of questioning: The moderator will call on candidates in a way that ensures fairness. Some questions may be addressed to specific candidates, but in every case, all candidates will have an opportunity to respond if they choose. All these questions came from the residents of this town. No rebuttals are allowed in this forum for tonight. Only candidates are allowed to appear on stage at the forum, no surrogate, no coaching. A table outside the forum room is available for campaign literature for the candidates. No sharing of literature is allowed inside the forum room. Candidate and audience ground rules: All electronic devices must be deactivated. We heard that like a million times by now. Candidates and the audience must refrain from posting on social media during the forum. Neither candidates nor their supporters or staff, nor anyone in the audience other than the league designee may photograph or record this event, or edit, or use excerpts from the official recording for use in their campaigns. They may share the link to the lead's recording in its entirety. No wearing of apparel or button supporting a candidate or party is allowed. Individuals wearing such will be asked to remove the button or turn their garments inside out. This forum is devoted to hearing only the views of the candidates running for this position. Questions from the audience, if time permits, must be written on the cards provided upon entry into the forum. If we haven't, we'll pass the cards around if time permits. Questions will be screened before handing to the moderator. Questions must follow league policy of being concerned with issues relevant to the office being sought, in this case, the board, and not statements of personal views. Abusive, personalized, or irrelevant questions or remarks are not allowed. Questions may be addressed to a particular candidate, but all candidates will have the opportunity to reply. No discussion from the floor is allowed. No cheering or booing is permitted. I know we all love to encourage candidates, but please hold your applause until the end. I'm guessing all the rules are clear. We can start with the forum officially. The first question would be basically the opening statement. We will go, for the first question, we'll go in the alphabetical order, the last name. Candidate Fleischer, you have two minutes. You have two minutes. Please start with the opening statement.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Fleischer, and I'm running for reelection to the Montclair Board of Education because public education is my passion. First job out of law school, I was a law clerk for Justice Gary Stein when he heard Abbott versus Burke V, which was a key funding equity case at the state level. It reinforced my belief that I hold to this day that public schools can be a great lever to drive societal equity, but they can also be a lever that drives societal inequity if they're not properly funded, if they're not properly organized. So, you know, after paying off my law school loans with a couple of years as an attorney, I moved into public education for my career. I've served as auditor general of the New York City Public Schools, as business administrator for the Montclair Public Schools. I'm now director of enterprise risk for New York City School Construction Authority. And as a volunteer, I've served as PTA president at Hillside, at Glenfield, Montclair PTA Council, NAACP Education Committee. Basically, all of my passion, all of my work, all of my volunteer time has been poured into public schools because that's really what I love and where I feel I can contribute and add value. There's a lot of work to do. I think the district is heading in the right direction with our new superintendent and new interim business administrator, but there are a lot of hard decisions ahead, and I feel a responsibility to this town that raised me, I'm a Montclair High School graduate, to roll up my sleeves and support that hard work.
Thank you. Candidate Horowitz.
My name is Milt Horowitz, and I'm a fellow educator. Over 50 years ago, I was an assistant professor at Ramapo College, and I created the curriculum of the Educational Opportunity Fund and taught there. I know our children deserve our very best, and the entire chain of command needs to embrace the highest of standards for teaching our children. As an NAACP Education Committee member, I know we are the ones for whom everyone has been waiting for. The strength of our village, the stronger our village, the better we serve our children as scholars and role models. I am grateful to be in the same room with you, and I welcome the opportunity to learn from your experiences and your insights. Einstein once said, "Intellectual growth should commence at birth and cease only at death." That was stimulating me to instill curiosity and questioning and becoming a lifelong learner for all my students.
Thank you. Candidate Long.
Good evening, and thank you, League of Women Voters. Thank you, community. Appreciate the opportunity to be considered as a candidate for Board of Education. My name is Sean Long. I'm a business executive. I'm on the board of the Montclair YMCA, graduated at Morehouse College, and I'm an Eagle Scout, and I'm a dad. But I am not running for my kids. I'm running because I've seen, and I really believe, academic achievement for our kids needs to be prioritized, and that is the ultimate goal. And too many of our kids in this community are not achieving at the highest academic level. In my view, our district strategic plan has the right priorities: academics for all, community engagement, operations and systems, safety, healthy schools, all the right things. But those things lack clear metrics to measure those. And without clear measurables, you can't deliver on the promise and the outcomes and the progress that's needed. We also face a serious budget deficit. And for too long, we've kicked the can down the road. So we can't keep the patchwork going. We need long-term fixes that align every dollar with student learnings. Look, my priorities are high-quality education, safe schools, honest communication. So that's why I'm here. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Candidate McMahon.
Thank you very much. Thanks for hosting, and thanks to all for coming tonight to hear what we have to say. My name is Carrie McMahon. My wife and I moved to Montclair over a decade ago for largely many of the same reasons I suspect many of you moved here. We wanted to raise our kids in a socio-economically diverse town with great schools and with the Montclair core values of seeing diversity as a strength and equity as a necessity. I have three kids that are currently in the Montclair school system, two at Wachung Elementary and one at Buzz Aldra Middle School. And I'm running for the Board of Ed because I've seen firsthand the issues that are impacting our district, and I would like to be part of the solution. Professionally, I worked in regulatory affairs in the pharmaceutical industry for 15 years. As the name suggests, the regulatory department interprets regulations and rules and guidances and ensures that the company is operating in compliance with them. So compliance with the law feels like a relevant experience for the board for this next term moving forward. I'm also someone who leans into community service. I have board experience, serving on the board of a local nonprofit called Impact 100 Essex. I have served on the board of my church, St. James Episcopal Church. I've served as a two-year term PTA president at Wachung School, have co-chaired several committees, including the SATP Committee. That work has allowed me to collaborate with teachers and administrators to find the most effective ways to benefit the school and our students. At this moment, the top priority for our district is the budget. So my top three priorities are fiscal responsibility, putting students at the center, and increasing transparency and communication. If elected to the school board, I will bring proven leadership and a willingness to collaborate that is rooted in my professional background of compliance and my years of service to the school and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Yvonne Buchnight-Kurunbe here tonight, so I will read her opening statement verbatim.
Good evening, and thank you for being here tonight. My name is Yvonne Buchnight, and it has been my privilege to serve as a member of the Montclair Board of Education. First, let me offer my apologies for not being present with you this evening. I'm currently in Dubai, hosting a cultural tour with 45 individuals from across our nation, work that reflects my deep belief in the power of education, diversity, and global understanding. I bring 39 years of experience in public schools, along with my work as an adjunct professor at Kane University. As a mother of two successful Montclair graduates, I know both as a parent and as an educator how vital, strong schools are for our children, our families, and our community. During my time on the board, I've had the honor of serving on special ed, curriculum, and instruction, culture and climate, and policy committees. That work has allowed me to collaborate closely with educators, families, and community members on the issues that matter most: supporting all learners, strengthening academic programs, and fostering a safe, inclusive environment in our schools. Our district is facing serious challenges, particularly with our budget and deficit. These issues are not just numbers on a page; they directly impact class sizes, staffing, and the opportunities we can provide to students. With my experience and deep commitment to public education, I'm ready to continue making the thoughtful, student-centered decisions needed to protect classrooms while ensuring fiscal responsibility. My campaign platform is built on three commitments: access, achieve, and advance. Every child deserves access to the resources and support they need to succeed. Every student should be able to achieve their full potential in safe, supportive, and academically rigorous schools. As a district, we must advance, moving forward with equity, transparency, and responsibility so Montclair schools remain strong for generations to come. I'm proud of our community, proud of our students, proud to continue advocating for them. Thank you, and I look forward to continuing this improved conversation with you at the next forum, over coffee or in your home. Connect me with yb4boe@gmail.com. Thank you. You're on time. So the first question, first question to candidates: What professional or personal experience do you bring, such as financial, auditing, or budget management skills, that prepares you to address the district's $18 million deficit? This goes to candidate Fleischer.
As I mentioned in my opening statement, I've served most of my career as an internal auditor in public education, as well as school facilities. I've also served as a business administrator in Montclair. Professionally, I am very familiar with the reporting that the board members should be receiving and how it should be handled. I have spent, I would imagine, more time than anybody in Montclair going back over every board finance committee report, every board secretary's report we received, every bills list, every transfer report, to look at, you know, what we knew, the questions that we asked and escalated and raised to levels, the actions we took to change the leadership in the schools. But it's also critical to understand the lessons that have to be learned from what we didn't know and to make sure that the right improvements to internal controls are built into our permanent policies to ensure that this can't happen again.
Time's up. Thank you. Candidate Long.
Okay. So I'm not an auditor. That's not the experience or expertise that I bring to this space. So my background, again, I'm a business executive, so I do own large P&Ls. But what I'm able to do is align the budgets to the priorities. That's what I'm good at. You know, when I think about the work that needs to be done, I think about the work I do on the board of the YMCA, and I think about what good governance looks like. It's a high-functioning board, so my curiosity is, I lead with curiosity, I bring that to the forum and to the space. I'm really inquisitive about how do we align our outcomes to what's going to impact the students, and then what are the trade-offs that need to be made to manage the budget? You cannot spend more than you have. That's what I bring to the board.
Thank you. Candidate McMahon.
Thank you. The aspect that I would most focus on is regulatory compliance. So in my professional background, I had drafted standard operating procedures, and incorporating new internal controls seems to be a big focus for how we want to move forward with managing the budget. Even in my experience as PTA president, with a very much smaller budget than the $170 million school budget that we have right now, but even with that budget, the PTA required dual signatures, it needed two people to sign off on checks, it would not allow one, which it seems was not the practice in the past with the district. Again, that's something that will change moving forward, but these are some of the things that I would bring. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Horowitz.
My military experience taught me a lot about being aware of the consequences of your actions. I was actually a spy, and it was quite a unique experience. And I've served on some boards, the World Fellowship Center in New Hampshire and New Jersey Peace Action. I graduated from Montclair State, and I was deep in debt. My wife and I were aware of this debt, and it took us about two years, and we were completely debt-free for the rest of our lives. So I was teaching my children in high school and in college about financial responsibility and teaching them how to read their paychecks and how to deal with credit card debt, and I think I can bring that experience to the board.
Thank you. Next question: If elected or re-elected, what steps will you take to move the district towards fiscal responsibility? Candidate Horowitz.
If elected, what steps will you take to move the district towards fiscal responsibility?
Well, as an individual, there's not much I can do without four other members of the board. So, and since I'm new to this situation, this is a learning experience for me, and I've been doing a lot of research. And so there's two parts to the Board of Education: curriculum and financial responsibility. All I know about the existing situation is what I've read, and I don't even know if that's accurate. So I really cannot speak to that financial responsibility as a single person on the board.
Candidate McMahon.
And what to bring to move it forward for fiscal responsibility, I would, again, just talk about some of the internal controls. So this piece, we would really need to partner with the interim business administrator, Ms. Dana Sullivan. She and Ms. Turner have been presenting their plan in the last few weeks, and I know more will be even presented tomorrow night at the Board of Ed virtual meeting tomorrow night. So being able to collaborate with stakeholders and move things forward in a timely fashion is something that I'd bring.
Candidate Fleischer.
Look, I think Mrs. Turner and Ms. Sullivan are on the right track. The board secretary's report we received for June of 2025 to close out last fiscal year was the first kind of truly transparent board secretary's report that we received that showed us on a line-by-line basis across the entire budget where we were over-obligated, over-encumbered beyond what our revenues could support. It was a sobering report, but we're on the right track because we're getting the information we need. We need to continue pursuing that. We need to be very clear about what information, what reporting, what data we need to support the recommendations that are going to come from the superintendent's office so that we can make an educated decision to vote yes or no on those recommendations. It's not our responsibility to make the recommendations, but we need to have good data, good information, good support, good explanations, and we have to develop that through our questioning so that we can make those critical decisions as a board.
Candidate Long.
What I would bring is, I'd advocate for bringing clarity to where we're going. I think it's really important to have a vision of what the outcomes are. I've heard our superintendent start to talk about the portrait of a student. I think that work's important to really understand where you're going to go. So for me, aligning, again, the work, the budget, to the academic outcomes that we're looking to deliver and achieve. So for me, I'd really advocate, one, where are we going? Bringing real clarity to that so we can then build a budget that supports and backs it up. Second, I do support a forensic audit. For me, that really comes from two places. One is to understand what is structural and what's one-time. So really having a clear breakdown of what's structural in the budget that needs to be addressed by other recommendations, and what are those one-time things. Those would be the two things I'd start with advocating for. Thank you.
Thank you. This question is addressed specifically to current or former board members. The district has faced serious financial mismanagement in recent years. Why should voters trust your leadership to ensure stronger oversight going forward? Candidate Fleischer.
So I would urge folks to go back and look at the finance committee reports. You know, I was not on the finance committee my first year on the board. I became a member in calendar year 2024 in January, and then I became chair just this January. If you look at the questions we raised, at the concerns we flagged, at the questions that we asked over and over again, month after month, you'll have a sense of what we were focused on. We didn't have the necessary data to understand that we were going to face an in-year deficit in our spending, but we knew enough to advocate heavily for the changes that you've seen in leadership. It was a critical component of our superintendent's selection process. Again, I think we're on the right track, but we need to keep asking tough questions, and we need to get much better reporting and data, and we're starting to see it now.
Candidate Long.
I'm here, so my time on the board, I was appointed. So I was on the board for a short period of time, a little over six months, just long enough to get a peek behind the curtain. I'm here because there's more work to be done. So I know just enough to know that it's not functioning the way it should be. So I'm coming back mainly because, again, our ability to have more focus on student outcomes is critical and urgent. I know just enough to know that it's not good yet, and our kids, our children, do deserve better. So that's why I'm coming back. I operate with honesty and integrity. That's a part of who I am, and that's why I'm coming back.
All right. Thank you. Next question: How will you ensure that all students, including transgender and non-binary students, receive the support and protection they need to thrive? Please be specific. This question goes to candidate Fleischer.
Look, I've served on the Culture and Climate Committee, so I have some insight into the harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigations that we've had in the district and some of the actions that we've taken to try to address it. But we need to start at the earliest years and really develop a district-wide plan for character education that reflects Montclair's values of inclusion and acceptance and embracing people of different identities and backgrounds. That's who we are as Montclair. We need to make sure that that's reflected in the curriculum from the earliest years so that we are building a community that supports one another, lifts one another up. And we need to kind of measure the impact of that curriculum, of that work we're doing through the HIV cases that we see and the other incidents that we're seeing in the schools. It's not enough to put something in place. We need to make sure that it's having the impact that we need.
And Horowitz.
It's very difficult. My experience with school has been one that I was, as a child, I was bullied, and I was a stutterer and had to face that every day, and it becomes overwhelming, and teachers did nothing. I think that it's a teacher's and parent's responsibility to teach everyone that we are team players, that when we take our children and separate them, every other seat, every other row, which, you know, defeats the idea of cheating, but it does teach mistrust of one another. So there's got to be a better way to deal with these issues. There was a quote that I heard a long time ago about how your skin is just a bag that contains the content of your soul, and that the color of that bag is totally irrelevant. And so with that in mind, we need to teach each other and work together to be able to defeat the people who want to foster hate and division.
Candidate McMahon.
I am committed to ensuring that all students are able to learn in a safe educational environment that's free from discrimination. New Jersey is a unique place for us to live. Actually, starting tomorrow, the schools in the district are, and statewide, are celebrating the Week of Respect, so this is one good step. There's also, New Jersey has a law against discrimination, which requires schools to take action that's reasonable, that's calculated to end harassment and prevent it from recurring. So I think New Jersey is a unique place to address the specific question, and Montclair specifically. We actually had all three of our middle schools and our high school just got certified for the program that's called No Place for Hate from the Anti-Defamation League. So I think we have a very nice trajectory, and it's one of the things that makes Montclair special.
Candidate Long. Candid Long.
So, full stop, you got to keep everybody safe. That's really important. You know, I'm pausing a little bit because as I'm listening to the responses, I think it is important that I articulate, for me, for our children, for this community, my skin is not an irrelevant bag that just carries some stuff inside. How I show up as a Black man in society is important. That's who I look at every day in the mirror. For each of our children, it is important they are proud of who they are and how they show up in this community and in this world. For them to have the confidence and for our community to pour that into them, no matter how they identify, how they look, the color of their skin, to be confident and make sure they know it is not irrelevant is important. That's a part of safety. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next question. Specifically list the ways you would address the ongoing achievement or opportunity gap between white and BIPOC students. Start with Candid McMahon.
Thank you. In 2015, Montclair conducted a comprehensive achievement gap audit, and it evaluated four years of data. It was pretty comprehensive, and it found that even in the earliest years of finding quantifiable data, there were differences in standardized testing, and that was at third grade. The achievement gap audit came from 2015. It did come with a number of recommendations. Many of them have already been implemented. Some of them are still a work in progress, but I think that they did a very good job of outlining some of the ways that we can go about this. So I'm going to do my best to do it in 90 seconds, but we've got to do informed academic planning. So that's the preparedness of students as they enter key transitional years, so ninth grade, to ensure that they're positioned to take higher-level courses at MHS with clear academic roadmaps. We need to equip teachers with tools for effective instruction. The Go Teach audit of Montclair's Special Ed Program recommended the creation of a systemic approach to language arts in general education and special education settings that include best practices for interventions, revised curriculum. We also need to tap into community resources, and there are a number of things that we, I have many other things in mind, but okay, I'm constrained by time.
Appreciate that. Candid Long.
So we, this is one we've got to call out really clearly, right? Our Black and Hispanic students are lagging behind. That's the crisis. And, you know, while we, as a community, certainly advocate very often for equity, for a lot of different things, that is a crisis. We are failing a really important part of our community. These students are falling behind. There is some urgency that is required. We're going to need to be able to address this budget and support these children. You listed some thoughtful things that we need to consider as we move forward. But right, early intervention, algebra readiness, these things need to move much faster. We talk about universal pre-K. That's a non-negotiable as we think about the work that's coming. That is consistently, from a data perspective, showing it makes a difference. We've got to do better in the middle schools. We have to do more in the high schools, and we also have to broaden the aperture of how we're preparing our students for life after high school. In addition to college tracks, we have to prepare our students for a broader range of outcomes. This is a crisis in our community that we have to get louder and more consistent about advocating for. We need forums, in addition to the budget and the facilities forums. We need academic forums that identify and call this out. Thank you.
Thank you. Candid Fleischer.
You know, I want to lift up what Sean just said. This is a crisis. It's been allowed to persist for too long. We have studied it. I was business administrator when the Achievement Gap Advisory Panel issued their report. We were able to implement a lot of the recommendations. Some of them were not sustained. And then, over the years that I have served on the board, we have been expanding towards universal pre-K, which, as Sean indicated, data indicates is the most critical information, I'm sorry, intervention we can put in place to start attacking opportunity gaps. But certainly, the transition also from pre-K to kindergarten is critical. As we have more children in universal pre-K, we identify their learning needs, their reading needs earlier. We've refocused the ELA curriculum on the science of reading and done early dyslexia screenings to identify learning needs as early as possible. And then all the way through to the high school level, we've invested in AP preparation boot camps to increase access and success for students of color in our highest AP courses, and we've created pathways for career and technical education that are also critical to support as well.
Thank you. Candid Horowitz.
I agree with both Sean and Brian that the achievement starts with pre-K. I was a teacher of mathematics. I have a question for all of you. How many of you love mathematics? There's an achievement gap among adults as well. I had a PhD come up to me who had a PhD in English literature, and he said, "What do you teach?" And I said, "I'm a professor of mathematics." And he said, "That's the worst subject. I never could understand it." Now, here's a man whose PhD stands for philosophy. That's mathematics, the philosophy and logic of thought. And here's a person, as an adult professor in college, saying, "Never could understand it." So it is important because the lens of mathematics teaches everything. Because I taught my children in schools about finance, about biology and chemistry. Everything teaches through the lens of mathematics.
Thank you. This question is to current and former board members. Do you believe the board had adequate systems in place to detect the deficit sooner? If not, what changes would you push for to prevent future surprises? Let's start with Candid Long.
Clearly, no. It has not, I mean, it's not been there. So there's certainly gaps in what has led to this deficit. You know, again, just objectively looking to have a deficit that has accumulated over this number of years, there's clearly gaps in the governance that was in place. There did lack, for too many years, the checks and balances that were appropriate and that transparently are consistent across every board I've ever been a part of that would prevent some of these things that have happened. So the good news is, the new superintendent and the board have put in some measures that should help prevent these at some basic level go forward, but those checks and balances have not been in place.
Candid Fleischer.
Look, the community is angry. I'm angry too. From the moment I stepped on the board, I was flagging the fact that we were six months behind already in receiving Board Secretaries' Reports. I'm probably going to get in trouble for saying any of this. I have been flagging concerns about the reporting that we have been receiving, about the lack of detail and transparency in budget presentations, advocating for more information to be shared. It takes a while, as an individual board member, to build the necessary consensus around that work. Ultimately, it was a critical component of our superintendent search, and we're starting to put the right things in place now. But I'm angry that those controls, that we didn't get the accurate reporting that the community deserved to allow us to truly fulfill our responsibility. Our responsibility can't be fulfilled without accurate reporting and accurate data, and I'm very upset that we didn't have it, and we need to put in place the controls to ensure we have it going forward.
Thank you. The Federal Department of Education has advised schools to not use seclusion and restraints given concerns about its potential for long-term trauma. Would you support a public discussion on this issue, and why, or why not? Let's start with Candid Long.
Sure, I would support a public discussion. For me, I'd need more data on this topic. I would start with, the framework I would use is, what is the impact to students, understanding where this has been done well, to gather some more data to move forward, but we'll certainly be open to any of these topics that are important to our district and our children to have a public discussion.
Candid Horowitz.
Read the question again, please. What is this about?
Yeah, that's pretty mouthful. Sure. The Federal Department of Education has advised schools to not use seclusion and restraints given concerns about its potential for long-term trauma. Would you support a public discussion on this issue, and why, or why not?
Yes, I would support it. I think that children need to be in a safe place, that there's a difference between discipline and punishment. Discipline teaches the student how to behave, where punishment makes the teacher feel better. So, but it does nothing to teach the student anything about social responsibility. I believe that rules, especially with teenage kids in high school, is, are irrelevant in that you can't make enough rules without the students looking for loopholes. What I always did was I said to them, "I trust you until you can't, until you prove to me you can't be trusted, and you'll be hard-pressed to regain my respect and trust." That, I let them sit where they wanted. They could share whatever they wanted, and they learned how to work and cooperate together. And one of the worst things I found was, first of all, I never yelled at my classes, ever. As a matter of fact, if they got unruly, I would whisper, which meant that the other children who wanted to hear controlled the class. And it works. And one of the worst things that you can say, I would call, if a child was misbehaving, I would say, "I'd like to see you after class." And I would say to them, "I was really disappointed in your behavior today."
Candid Fleischer.
Yes, I would absolutely support a public discussion. I think public discussion that is informed by research and best practices and clarity around the legal and regulatory frameworks that operate is critical for the public's understanding, for the board's understanding, and I think it would be a worthwhile discussion to have. I would also be open to bringing in specialists and experts who have done this research, who have looked at what alternatives are that protect the physical safety as well as the psychological safety of every child.
Candid McMahon.
Yes, I also support a public discussion about this topic. Over the summer, Superintendent Turner held a number of listen and learn sessions. She started July 1st and tried to get to know the community before the school year began. And in one of those listen and learn sessions, a parent came up to the microphone and talked about her child's story about being kept in restraints in one of our Montclair schools, and talked about how scary it was for them and how they recounted it at home. So yes, definitely a public discussion with data. Let's include the research. Let's bring in specialists and experts. And also, that leads me to one thing. This is a good time for me to bring it up, that I would really love to see us included at the Board of Ed, is creating an ad hoc citizen advisory committee. We have incredible talent and a wealth of information and knowledge here in town. If we could create something like what other New Jersey towns have, where it's acute, specific challenges that the district faces, it's not to be relied upon for long-term assistance, but it can be extremely helpful, and this could be an area where we could tap into somebody who has a specific expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. If elected, would you commit to making the results of the Woodman Field soil testing public? How would you allocate resources to fix a Woodman Field to ensure the safety and health of our students? Candid McMahon.
Would I make the report public? Is that's the question?
That is a question.
Okay. If it's within the jurisdiction of being able to show it to the public, then I absolutely support it. One of the three top priorities that I'm running on is about increased transparency and increased communication. So I think the more information that the public knows, then the better off we all are, the more discussion we can have, the more questions, and then we can tailor that to find the best response and way to move forward for the town. Thank you.
Candid Long.
Sure. If it's within range for it to be made public, I think it should be made public as relates to allocating additional resources. We do not have any more money, so resources should be aligned to student outcomes. So if this is going to be aligned to student achievement, I would support resources. If not, we do not have any more money. So if we're able to legally make the report available, we should do so. Thank you.
Candid Horowitz.
Yeah, I would support making it public. When I first moved to where I live now, the Cody Field is right behind my house, and the Immaculate Conception Church, they were using pesticides and various other things on the grass and to control the grass. I called the church and said, "Look, you're poisoning your children." And they stopped doing it. They were then collecting the grass that they were cutting, using it for mulch along the fence lines, and it's been that way for the past 53 years. And so there are environmentally friendly ways of dealing with Woodman Field, and I think that spending the money to correct anything that is harmful to the children is very important.
Candid Fleischer.
Yes, I would support making the records public. I think under the Open Public Records Act of New Jersey, you know, those tests would have to be made public, and I certainly wouldn't stand in the way. You know, to Mr. Long's point, resources are a critical issue. We're going to have to decide how to ensure that the resources are most focused on student success in the classroom. If we can work with community partners to address what I think were some, you know, slips frankly, in the design and execution of the field, particularly around the backstop and some other areas that are not properly designed, frankly. I think we need to work with those community partners to address those deficiencies, you know, and hopefully we can take advantage of the booster clubs of the community so that we can make it happen, given our resource limitations.
All right. Thank you. This question is to current and former board members. Given the superintendent's statement that the district may not be able to meet payroll by December, how would you balance supporting staff with the need for fiscal responsibility and decisions such as raises? Candid Fleischer.
So, again, we've got a cash flow issue right now where we learned that we ended fiscal year '24, '25 with $12.6 million in outstanding obligations. And the new interim business administrator has also calculated that the current year budget was under-budgeted by an additional $7 million. Given the timing of the tax levy payments that we receive through the township, that's why Ms. Sullivan is concerned about cash flow to make payroll by December. It's not that, you know, we can't get through half of the budget year. It's the timing of the cash. So Mrs. Turner and Ms. Sullivan have recommended that we get in advance in our state aid to ensure that we can meet our obligations through the year, and we're going to have a conversation on Tuesday night that I encourage everybody to log in and see with regard to our options for addressing both that $12.6 million past obligation and the anticipated $7 million shortfall. obligation and the anticipated $7 million shortfall.
Thank you. Candidate Long.
Sure. What a mess we're in. We need to make sure that we are taking care of these teachers and taking care of the classrooms that our children are in. It's really, really important. So they just aligned on a new agreement. That should be upheld. That's a part of as we build trust, you gotta make good on the deals that you're making right now. That's really important. So I know there's more information coming, a recommendation from the superintendent later this week on Tuesday. I'll be very interested to see what proposals and recommendations are made, but I'm hoping that will protect classroom instruction and protect our children to make sure, again, the academics are put at the center and we're taking care of our teachers so they can keep doing the fantastic work that they do and our children can keep thriving. That's it.
All right, thank you. Next question. What specific systems, reporting formats, or policy changes would you support to improve financial transparency and to build public trust? Candidate Horowitz.
That's very difficult for me to answer that question since I have no experience with being on the board, but I think there are probably ways of, that how bills come in are, that makes the board aware of what the business administrator is doing. And so you can have a checks and balance system that would be able to confront how this money is spent and where it goes.
Candidate Long.
So again, my approach here would be to make sure that we do have this forensic audit, and again, in service of understanding what's structural and what's one-time. That would be the starting point to really understand how we need to start to plan going forward. Additionally, again, we need to make sure we have clarity on where we're going as we think about the outcomes that we're looking to deliver as a community for these children, be really clear on those outcomes and understanding that we have a budget that will support that. We owe the community a plan with clarity of where we're going as we start to build budgets and they're measurable along the way. So those would be the steps that I would come in and take and make sure that we're acting on. Thank you.
Candidate McMahon.
I also support a forensic audit. I think it's going to be really important for the community to be able to move forward. I think that one of the other aspects that we'll need to do is to map out the mandatory costs that we have versus things that are optional that we are choosing to do. If a state mandated fiscal monitor comes in, we know that they will go down to the bare bones, and it would be good to see what that would look like in advance. So if there's a way for the business administrator to map that out and outline that to the public, I think that there's a definite trust challenge right now between the public and the district and also unfortunately, the Board of Ed. And so the more information that we can give them about what our next steps will be, then I feel that they will feel in better hands. So that would be my answer. Thanks.
Fleischer.
So every year, the district undergoes a mandated financial audit under the state, but the audits that were done of past fiscal years did not, they flagged concerns about fund balance, they flagged concerns about unbudgeted spending. And again, we need to go through and document what was mandated unbudgeted spending and what was discretionary unbudgeted spending. I agree with you. I think the community needs and the community deserves a true investigation that goes deeper than those audits, whether we call it a forensic audit or a specific investigation or agreed-upon procedures. They need to understand who knew what, when, what exactly was done to shift costs from one fiscal year to another fiscal year, what were deficiencies in the financial reporting. The community to reestablish trust needs to understand that. And I think for us to move forward, we need to understand the lessons that need to be learned, and those lessons need to be built into policy. We got a list of internal controls improvements that are being implemented. Those need to be locked into policy, and policy is the board's responsibility.
Thank you. Just a general announcement, after another two questions, we'll be taking questions from the audience. We're passing out the cards. Please try to write legibly on those cards so we can read the questions. Thank you, appreciate that. Next question to the candidates. Apart from bond funding, what portion of the district's annual operating budget should be dedicated to building maintenance and infrastructure? Candidate Long.
I would need more data to make an informed answer to that question. I'd need additional information and studies to understand what, again, as we think about our budget, like what, you do need to have a capital plan, you do, so, but I would just need more information to understand where our district is to make an informed response to what percent should be allocated. I need more information. Thank you.
Okay. Candidate Horowitz.
I believe that the amount of our property taxes, between 50 and 55% of our taxes goes to schools. How much is then allocated for, probably the majority of that money, probably 30 or 40%, somewhere in that range, goes to salaries and so forth. So capital improvements comes under bond issues and so forth and so on. So whatever the board and superintendent tells the board about what needs to be improved in building construction or maintenance, then gets put into the budget under those issues. But I think that what we spend for education is very worthwhile. It, the better educated our students are, the more productive they are in our society.
Candidate Fleischer.
Look, for the last decade, unfortunately, too much of our budget has had to go to maintenance, break-fix, skilled trades, because our basic infrastructure, our heating and cooling systems, our ventilation systems, our boilers went far too long, passed their useful life without replacement. It's one of the reasons I ultimately had supported moving to a type 2 district with an elected board, because we were able to go out for the bond referendum to replace obsolete systems that were not meeting the needs of our staff or our students or anybody in those schools. As we put new HVAC systems in place, we should find that we have reduced energy costs and that we're spending less money on break-fix and upkeep and less custodial time so that they can focus on other things that they've fallen behind on, like broken bathroom stalls and toilet seats and sinks, because so much time and money has to be poured into just patching obsolete heating and ventilation systems.
Candidate McMahon.
Thank you. Part of the fiscal responsibility also would fall under the $188 million bond referendum that we have, that is updating a lot of our facilities and trying to fix some of that. It's going school by school. So I think we are on the right track. That is outside of the operating budget. We're in, I think, year three of year, of six is the plan right now. Hopefully, six is the end, but that would be one of the things that I would be watching closely if elected to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. On Tuesday, the Board of Education is having a special meeting to vote on whether to hold a special election to raise taxes. If you were on the board, how would you vote to have or not to have a special election to raise taxes and why? Lot of questions in there. Candidate McMahon.
Thank you. Before the board votes, they're going to get a very in-depth presentation, and so without that, it's hard to say how we would vote here tonight, two days before that, that meeting and the presentation. I would hope that one of the things that they include in the presentation are, one of the things I mentioned earlier, about separating out what all of the mandatory costs are, also finding a way if we could cover that $7 million shortfall for this current school year, so that we would only have to go retroactively, making sure that they talk about if we can consolidate some of that debt. We have $12.6 million of our budget deficit from last year that we owe. Is there a way that maybe we can do that, that we don't have to do that in a lump sum, that we can space that out? So the timing of the payments would be something that I'd like to see. And then trying to find if we can limit what that $7 million is right now so that we might not have to take one of the items to the special election. But without the information from the presentation, it's not, I would not be able to say.
Thank you. Candidate Horowitz.
Yeah, I think it's, it's more than likely that this is going to have to happen. You know, the money has to come from someplace, and the only place it can come from is property tax. So whether the town votes on it or whether the state tells us what to do, either way, that money has to come up, you know. So it's going to come out of our property taxes regardless of whether the state tells us how much it's going to be or whether the election or the, to raise the taxes goes through. Either way, it's going to have to happen.
Candidate Long.
Certainly, look, I would like a little bit more information, but I'm curious, has anyone here seen the film Our Town, Our Schools? I know some of you were in this film, right? I'm informed by the history of this town, and one of the things I think about really deeply as we're in this position is how important it is for the things that matter most to this community to be reflected in the decisions that we make for the children. Local control, to me, is very, very important. It's also really, really important, as we make the choices, we demand real clarity on the budget and the plan and the outcomes we are going to deliver. It's a big deal. We do not have the track record of managing this money well, but giving up local control, when you think about how important the history of this town is, is something that makes me very, very uncomfortable. Thank you.
Candidate Fleischer.
Look, we expect to receive a lot more information on Tuesday. We've been forwarding our questions to the superintendent with regard to some of the details we hope to hear on Tuesday with regard to the plan. I think we've heard a lot from community members who have urged us to allow both of these special questions to go forward, and we've heard from a lot of residents who said they absolutely could not support a tax increase. I think, you know, we need to, Tuesday is just step one. There are then a couple of months between Tuesday and when the special election would be held in December, where we need to engage the community, and I mean the superintendent and the administration, the board, the community needs to engage in a discussion about what would the decisions that need to be made should the bond questions not pass. But I think we need to engage the community in that discussion, and I think they want to see us look at all of the options. They want to see us put forward some difficult financial decisions that will help us achieve financial stability going forward so that there aren't recurring hits to the tax levy, so that's our obligation as well.
Thank you. Those are all the questions we had for you guys. Now, we'll move on to the questions from the audience. I got a few questions. This is a proportionally very engaging audience. I got a lot of questions here, so I'm kind of scrambling to pick one, a few randomly. At the same time, we're trying to avoid any questions which you might have answered already. So my brain capacity is very limited, so please give me a few seconds. Bingo, we got a question. Do you support, this is for all candidates, do you support a forensic audit? It's a two-part question. Given our budget circumstances, how do you propose the district pay? Similar responses. Candidate McMahon. Just randomly picking an order.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for making me first for that one. But yes, I really do support a forensic audit. I do think it's going to be a very important thing for our, our community to see the details and the evidence and find what the recommendations were and get a better understanding of how that all transpired so that we never end up in this position again. How do I propose the funding for it? Well, one way that the funding could happen actually is through some community donations. There has actually been a large number of people who have told me that they would, that they would be very happy to donate to some kind of a GoFundMe campaign, trying to figure out what the ballpark of the dollar estimate might be. It seems like it might be in approximately the $250,000 range for what we would be looking at, but I believe that this is important. I believe that there are a lot of people in town that think that this is important, and so that that could be one potential source. Salute.
Candidate Long.
Yes, I support the forensic audit. I would recommend it gets built into the financials of a go-forward plan. Thank you.
Candidate Horowitz.
Yes, I would support a forensic audit. Many years ago, when I first bought my house, I filed for a tax appeal, and it so happened that I, it was abated. I won. But subsequently, I thought about it, about a year later, I thought about it, that I felt that I made a mistake. And that who picks up the tab for my abatement is everybody else in this room who owns a home. And so I never did that again. So even though I may have, you know, corrected some things on the assessment, but I really feel that education is really important. So a forensic audit, and I'm willing to pay the extra tax money. I really feel that education is worth the penny, worth every single penny that we put up for.
Look, I would support a forensic audit or a similar investigation that gets to the same answers about who knew what, when, what happened, exactly where, you know, was money shifted from one fiscal year to another year? Are there any indicia of fraud beyond the reporting deficiencies we've already identified? I think the community deserves that. You know, I think Carrie's idea, because I've heard a lot of support from the community of potential fundraising makes sense. I don't believe legally the district itself can run that fundraiser, but maybe one of our community partners can do that. But absent that, as Mr. Long said, we've got to build it into the financial plan going forward because the community is understandably demanding answers, and we understandably need to know all of the lessons that are to be learned from what's happened so that we can build the right controls and put the right policies in place to prevent it from happening again.
All right, thank you. First of all, I would like to profusely thank the audience for obliging my request and writing the questions very, very legibly. Thank you so much. That takes so much pressure off my shoulders here. Appreciate that. Getting back to the question, there's a question on teachers here. This is for everybody. How do the issues affect the teachers? I feel that a lot of people do not care about what goes on in the schools once their students graduate, but this, but they should care anyway because it could affect future generations. This is verbatim. I'll start from here. Candidate Fleischer.
Look, the strength of our communities, the strength of our town, of our community is and always will be tied to the strength and the success of our schools. We can't be a successful town without successful public schools. You know, whether you've got kids in the district or don't, you know, property values, which feels, you know, classless to even focus on, but just who we are as a community, what we value, our strength as a civic community, our future as a town, is dependent on maintaining strong public schools and improving our public schools to ensure they meet the needs of every child and act as a lever. and act as a lever for greater equity achievement for every child, rather than as a lever that locks in inequity and, you know, inequality. So everybody has a stake in this.
Candidate Horowitz.
The consequences of our actions are quite clear, even, you know, down the road. I'll give you an example. How many of you are aware of Christopher Columbus's great-great-great-grandmother? Ever heard of her? But yet, in the 13, mid-1300s, when she was alive, the bubonic plague was rampant through Europe, North Africa, and the Middle East. 75 to 100 million people were wiped out in that six-year period. Christopher Columbus's great-great-great-great-grandmother survived. Every person of European descent today in this country has a person, a mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, whatever, who survived that bubonic plague. So those consequences ripple through history for a long period of time. What we do here, those micro decisions that we make have a large impact. 50 or 100 years from now, what we teach today may no longer be relevant in 2065 or 2075. Who knows what's going on? So teaching how to be curious, to question, and to learn, the joy of learning is important.
Candidate Long.
Good to repeat the question.
Where was I? Which one was it? Okay. Okay, all right. Do you support, is that the one? Do you support? No, sorry. Take it easy. I told you my brain capacity is limited. Okay. How do the issues affect the teachers? I feel that a lot of people do not care about what goes on in the schools once their students graduate, but they should care anyway, because it could affect future generations.
Got it. I'm tracking. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we have to care. Our teachers are the lifeblood. You know, I've got, you know, my little ones, my, I won't tell you which ones, but I've got a kid that's fallen in love with, you know, math, and is excited about math, and when school ends, every, every summer, he's like, you know, can I do more math? And I'm like, sure, buddy. And that's because, you know, our teachers have inspired that. I've got a kid that, you know, arts, that's her jam. She loves poetry and writing and all those things, and, you know, our teachers, you know, support and foster that. You know, I have kids that are navigating through, you know, advanced placement, and I've got kids that are navigating through additional resources that they need based on how they learn, and the teachers help navigate that. And for me, going back to what we talked about, some of the outcomes, particularly around the Black and Hispanic students in this district that have been falling behind, whether my kids are in the school or when they're all done, this community, it still matters for all of, all of them, that the outcomes and the way we're supporting them to go out and become, you know, productive citizens. And when I think about these kids, and what I hope is, they graduate and they're critical thinkers. So our teachers, full stop, we gotta, we gotta do everything we can to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate McMahon.
Thank you. I agree, we need to support the teachers, that this is going to be a difficult time for them. We did sign the new contract with the MEA, but we have a shortfall, so teachers are going to be feeling uncertain, they're going to be feeling unsettled, they're not going to know what the long-term trajectory looks like for them, especially our newest teachers who just came in this year. So teacher retention and teacher morale, I think, is going to be particularly important for us this year, and some of those things can happen in ways that don't cost money to the district. So some of those can happen by giving them leadership positions in mentoring, in mentoring younger generation of teachers, or in recognizing them with awards. For instance, the New Jersey Governor Educator of the Year Award goes to one teacher per school in Montclair. There's also the Weston Award for Inspired Teaching that comes with a dollar amount, but there are ways to still make teachers feel valued and important, because, man, they really are.
All right, thank you. This question is specifically for Mr. Fleischer. You claim you flagged lateness of reports and inadequacy of data provided, but what did you do beyond merely flagging the problem? If you did nothing beyond flagging, how can you justify asking residents to vote for you?
Look, I'm in a tough spot, because we're really not supposed to talk about personnel matters, but if you look at the leadership that is in the district now, you can see that changes were made. Changes don't happen in a vacuum. We took action. We unfortunately did not know, due to the deficiencies in the reporting, that we were going to unders, overspend our budget by $12.6 million in that budget year, but we knew there were problems with unpaid invoices, we knew there were problems with, you know, lack of transparency in budget presentations and reports, we knew there were problems with, you know, finger pointing between departments. We escalated those concerns. Those concerns informed our deliberations in our superintendent interviewing and hiring process, and they informed the other changes that you've seen in administrative leadership, the business office, the third-party auditors, so we took action.
Thank you. Do you have an appetite for another question? Yeah? All right. Wonderful. Love it. Would you be willing to offer some bold ideas with regards to specific cuts or revenue generation to address the $20 million shortfall and future shortfalls? Candidate McMahon.
Yes, one big bold idea that I have, I mentioned earlier tonight, is that ad hoc citizen advisory committee. I really do think that we can tap into some of our local expertise and local talent. I actually had a neighbor who recently retired from her job tell me that she would gladly dedicate one day a week to finding efficiencies with our busing routes. As you know, the busing is one of our, one of our very large costs, so I think that would be an excellent use of her time, and that's just one example, where we could leverage some talent that we have here in town to save money on, on our budget.
Candidate Horowitz.
I don't have enough information to answer that question.
Candidate Long.
Again, I would go back to, you start with two places, right? One is, what are you trying to, trying to achieve? Making sure that the plan you have in place aligns with what you're trying to achieve. Two, you do really have to have clarity on what are going to be your systemic, structural things that need to be changed, and what are those one-time things? So once you have real clarity and precision on what's structural, what's one-time, then you can start to come up with the big, bold ideas. I do think it's important that everything's on the table, but it really has to be in service of what outcomes you're looking to deliver. So again, if you're looking for specifics, for me, I would certainly say, hey, you could probably look at transportation. How do you start to think about rebidding? How do you think about shared services across local districts? How do you think about reducing duplication in budget items? But you'd really have to understand again where you're going before you start to land on some of those big, bold ideas. Thank you.
Candidate Fleischer.
Look, ultimately, to the points my colleagues here have made, you know, we need to understand what the impact of any given cut is going to be on student achievement and student outcomes, and make sure that we are directing our cuts to places that are not going to negatively impact student outcomes. We did start a conversation at the last public board meeting about transportation specifically, where we talked about the fact that we have been leveraging essentially a middleman organization to bid all of our transportation, and there are some economies of scale that can exist through Essex Regional Ed Services Commission in terms of our out-of-district transportation, where we can combine routes with other, you know, students from other school districts who may be going to the same out-of-district schools as our students and find some efficiencies there. But for our in-district transportation, I think we need to look at eliminating the middleman, and I think there are other areas where we can look at eliminating middlemen as well. Can we insource some of the supplemental custodial contract that we're paying and reduce costs there? I think we probably are paying way too many middlemen to get the resources that we need in district, and we can look very closely at that.
Thank you. And just like that, we got to the closing statements. The closing statement is a minute long. Opening statements are started from left to right. I'll do the opposite for the closing. So that puts candidate McMahon, number one.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and for listening and for your questions. I hope I've given you some insight into what I stand for. Again, my name is Carrie McMahon. I'm hoping to bring my experience as a parent, a leader, and a community builder to the Montclair Board of Ed. I have experience serving on boards. I know how to collaborate across diverse stakeholders. I believe that at this time for the district, that my professional background in regulatory affairs and compliance will serve me well. I'm committed to helping elevate every student in our district. My focus will be on safety, inclusivity, community involvement, and fiscal responsibility, with keeping the students at the center of my decision-making. As you vote on November 4th, there are five candidates. You will vote for three, and I hope to be in your top three. Thank you very much.
Candidate Long.
Sorry about that. Okay. So, look, the promise of Montclair is big, and the history is rich. This town is built on one of New Jersey's most creative, diverse, and high-achieving districts, but today, we're at a crossroads. If we want our children to inherit the Montclair we're proud of, we need to marry that history of innovation with a new era of discipline, transparency, and measurable results. I'm a champion of academic excellence. Academic excellence. Honest budgeting and clear communication. Every policy I support will be judged with one question: Does it help students learn and teachers teach? I'm Sean Long, a dad, a neighbor, a board member, somebody who cares a lot, and who believes the best days of Montclair are ahead of us. If we're brave enough to make the changes we need now, we're going to be all right. Thank you.
Candidate Horowitz.
My son, I'm a strong proponent of special education. My son had special ed problems, and I think that, you know, I supported that. But I think that overall, you know, I'm an advocate for freedom, creativity, and a lifelong love of learning. And regardless of whether you vote for me, I encourage you all to vote. Please, vote, and encourage everyone you see to vote, period.
Candidate Fleischer.
Look, I bleed Mountie blue, grew up in this town, love this town, and I'm passionate about public education. Everything in my life has been focused on supporting public education, strong schools, and great outcomes for students. I feel like in my first term, we ended up in a place that we're not happy about. I think you've seen some of my anger and frustration in some of my colleagues, but I feel an obligation to this town I love, to these schools I'm passionate about, to be part of the solution, to make sure that the lessons learned are truly documented and internalized, that we're putting the right changes in place to make sure that every dollar is focused on where it will have the greatest outcome for student achievement, and that we can sustain that commitment going forward with proper transparency and oversight. Thank you.
That's it. Easy peasy lemon squeezy, that's it. Let me tell you one thing. I teach aerospace engineering to cadets, so it's always a delight to see a class with, by, rule-abiding attendees, and attentive as well. So thank you very much for following all the rules. Thank you, audience, and thank you all the candidates for giving time. Lesson, yeah, lesson learned for the day, the best way to spend your Sunday evening is attend a candidate forum night by the League of Women Voters. All right, folks? Thank you very much, and please do vote, regardless of whom you vote for. Please exercise your vote, because every vote matters, every voice matters. Thank you very much. Have a good weekend. God bless you.